Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting to order. Roll call, please, Ms. Donna.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Chesney?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Richmond?
Here.
Ms. Whitney Lanning? President?
All stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, guys, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Rhonda. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mike. Would you call the vote when we're ready, please, Ms. Donna?
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Seven zero. Items on discussion? Dr. Nolte?
Okay, the first item we have this evening is a change in the policy JHC D Administration of Medications to Students. Basically, I gave the red line item there in the, on the, on the agenda, on the item on simply. Basically, it changes that all EpiPen, auto syringes, asthma-related rescue medications, and Naloxone, which is a brand name Narcan, that's what you hear mostly, most of the time. But it, the old policy had just the middle schools and high schools having that Narcan in the building, but we would have that in every building just for student safety and just in case something would happen that we would need to resp- our nurses would need to respond. So, that's really the only change in that policy. Is there any?
Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Nolte. And the next one, is that yours, Dr. McGinnis?
It sure is. So, mine is a policy change as well, policy CE. We would recommend to change the language in this policy to reflect our current titles. So, changing Associate Superintendent to Assistant Superintendent, and then changing the Chief Finance Officer. We don't have a Director of Finance right now, so that would be an Assistant Superintendent, which we would leave that language in there. And then adding a Director of Communications, all being required to reside within the school district. So, I'd be happy to take any questions on that.
Was this, so this was just, this is just to clean up the, like, make the titles accurate?
Yes, so the language in here is actually kind of vague. And back in the day, principals were even required to reside in our district. And so, given the current pool that we have, and when we're trying to look for people to fill positions, we would just like to have this as our top executive team.
And that's only the people that are listed actually?
Correct.
On the policy?
Mm-hmm.
Dr. McGinnis, would there be like a grandfather clause type of thing?
We would.
And kind of going forward?
We would, yes. And actually, I mean, we would like for all of our district leadership to reside within our district, but given the, just the current pool that we have.
Right.
Sometimes that's a challenge. And so, if we could just stick with the top executive team, I think that would be a good start. So, but definitely grandfathering people in who are in those roles now.
Thank you.
And would this take into effect, like, immediately after approval of the next board meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
So, was it, so we will have to grandfather some people in because they don't fit this?
We will have one, we will have to grandfather in.
I just, I worry about grandfathering people in because then it just creates this issue with new people that get hired. So, new people get hired, and then this person, like, I think, for me, I would want like some sort of like year notice, but that's, I mean, we can debate that or not. But that's just now.
Can you explain year notice? What do you mean?
I mean, if we're saying that for people to take these positions, they have, you know, we feel like these are the positions specifically that need to reside within the school district. I just think it's hard when you say, "We're going to grandfather someone in." And to be clear, I don't know who it is. I don't want to know who it is. So, this is not out any one person. I just think it's hard when you say, "Well, you know, in five years, that person wasn't made to do it." I mean, I think that's what kind of got us into an issue last year, where I think we only had one Assistant Superintendent that lived in the district.
And is the board?
Well, it wasn't enforced. I mean, the, the only person that's been enforced is the Superintendent for quite some time.
Right, so that's, that's my concern, is that if there's one, if there's a position that we feel like is important to reside within the district, I think they should reside within the district. I mean, and it, it's a, it's a pain changing residencies, like, obviously. But I think if we're saying that that's important, that, you know, and the reasons why it's important, I think you had sent an email to this, like, if you're going to recommend tax increases, you need to be a tax-paying person in the district. If you're recommended changes to a school district, it's important that you're affected by those changes too. I just, I, I will support this change. I just don't think that there should, I think, so whoever, whoever, if it's important enough, these positions should, should let her. So, we don't, I mean, enforcement, I guess, doesn't.
It's okay, keep going.
Uh, so that's just my, my opinion. Thank you.
Do you have other comments about this? Okay. Thank you, Dr. McGinnis. Okay, the policy changes. That is you, Ms. Donna.
Yes, all of the policies that MSVA has forwarded to me have been vetted through all of the directors, and they are recommending those to be accepted. And they will be on the August twenty-fifth board meeting agenda for you all to approve. So, I just wanted to make sure that you all were aware of that and you looked through these.
And done almost all driven by changes in state legislation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? Okay. If there are not, okay, guys, everyone's looking at the policy E. At that area, I'm looking at you.
Why are you looking at me?
You know, no judgment, but.
I have had no questions.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, it's a pretty lengthy one.
I'll be on it, yeah. All good.
If there are any questions, if you can just let us know about those. Because they're going to be on the agenda at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Town hall meetings. We discussed these at the last meeting, and we were wanting to bring them to the informational meeting, you know, for more in-depth discussion. Who asked for this? It was Whitney? Because we were going to try to schedule these out and let everybody know?
Yeah, I think it's been a campaign promise of a lot of us, a lot of different times. And I know Rick Gearing really pushed for it for a while, so. And I think we've talked about it a lot, we've just never actually done it.
Perfect. I'm assuming that everybody brought your planner with you? Are we able to choose a month?
Sure.
A week a day to do this?
For the fall?
Yes. At least the fall, maybe the spring too as well?
That's what you had agreed to.
Okay, so, when do you think would be a good time?
When are parent-teacher conferences?
October twenty-seventh through the thirtieth, and then we're out of school on Halloween.
Okay.
Were you wanting to do them?
Somewhere early November, maybe.
I think early November sounds good.
We might do it for, might snow. So, July.
Okay, now we're looking in November.
Yeah.
Dr. McGinnis, is there a date of the week that's easier for the staff?
I don't think it's ever going to be perfect, no matter what day you pick. So, I would just pick a day, and then whoever can be there, we'll just try to be there.
Perfect. I was mainly asking about the communications and the cameras and such like that. Because they're going to have to be there with us.
Yeah, I think if we just know the day, then we'll.
Then you'll be able to adjust that. How about the evening of August fifteenth?
August?
August.
October. October.
I was just catching. You said October?
Yes, yes, I'm just asking if that's a good date for everybody. Okay, August fif- August, October fifteenth is not good. Is there a better date?
I will be out of town on those days.
Okay. It means we'll
want to try and like.
Have to move that a week earlier than if you're going to be out of town after that.
I, I'm not sure if it's going to last two weeks or one. I'm not trying to be difficult. I just don't have the full dates of it yet.
Well, and the week after that, at, at the end of it, it's the conference, it's the annual.
The conference?
Conference for MSVA. Um, and so, okay, let's look at, how about October the eighth?
October eighth?
Kim, can you just tell us what works for you, and we'll just do that?
Well, those particular times, I'll be in Tennessee, probably due to babysitting. So, it'd be, have to be after those first couple of weeks. So, anytime after that.
Well.
By the fifteenth, sixteenth, pass there. And I know it runs into the conference.
So, sixteen?
No.
Um, how about Tuesday, October twenty-first?
That should be good.
I can do that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
All right, that is our fall town hall meeting.
In the evening, I assume?
Five-thirty? Oh, yeah.
Here.
I think we, we've had this dream that we can move them around and make them more accessible, but I think sometimes that creates more confusion about where they're at or when they're at. I would just say to have it here.
I'm okay with here. Are you guys okay with this location?
I'm good with this.
I think so.
Also at five-thirty? Everyone okay with that time?
Yeah.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Will we be posting, um, will we be posting like an agenda or something prior to that night then?
Program of some sort?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, the spring.
Can we also make sure that we have our microphones on? There were complaints about that last time.
Yes. Everyone's mic, Rhonda?
Yep.
There we go. Time of winter, spring break?
March ninth through the twelfth, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Donna, did you check me?
It is ready.
Okay, thanks.
Get into April.
And then winter conferences?
And their school on the thirteenth?
Winter conferences in the spring then?
There's not, during that whole week of spring break, nine through the thirteenth.
Okay.
Anyone go, did he, did Mark yet?
Um. What about in the middle of the week, on the twenty-fifth?
On March?
Yes.
March two-five?
Yep.
Fourth.
Fourth, I mean.
That was not as far as I thought it was going to be. Okay. If everyone's okay with those dates, let's move on to item number six. The Foundation Board Representation. As in the bylaws, there needs to be a person from the board. Um, Ashley, could you remind us about the commitment of those meetings?
I believe it is once a quarter.
Okay.
I actually haven't gone to the first one yet. I believe it's not till late August or September.
Mm-hmm. Once a quarter, okay, so that's just the four meetings a year then?
Correct.
And it's usually during the day sometime, isn't it?
Three-thirty, I believe.
That's what I was thinking.
During the day? Is there a particular day of the week?
I don't know if they have a set day. The next one that they have is set on August twentieth at three-thirty. That'll be the first one I go to.
Okay. Okay. In the day.
So, we need, we need to select somebody?
Yeah. You spoke first. Does that mean you're interested?
Uh, yeah, I can do it.
Perfect.
Unless there's somebody else wants to do it. You'd like to do it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'll defer.
I don't have a preference. I don't want to do it.
Yeah, we, I do have, there's the gentleman at work that's already on it, you know, from my work, so it might be nice to do something different.
Um. Okay, so then it can be Kim, and then when Kim's not able to make it, Mike?
Yeah.
Is everybody okay with that?
So, we need, at the next meeting, we'll just motion second.
Mm-hmm.
I'll help.
Yep. And so, we've got a first and an alternate? Is everybody okay with that?
Sure.
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, next. Mr. Casey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, here, and this is a, these are for change orders for ATG that'll be bringing later this month. Uh, the first change order, there's two on this attachment. Uh, the first change order is for a zero increase. It is merely a ninety-day extension. For ATG, which is actually the company putting down the turf, um, the reason being is they weren't handed over the, the fields until the end of their contract date from original. So, they're asking to extend it ninety days to cover them. The next, the other item on here.
Can you ask a question about?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
When's that ninety days? I realize they're saying they're going to try to do it sooner than that, but when, when would that ninety days be?
It's ninety days from the eighteenth of July. I will have to calculate the, I don't have it right offhand.
It'll be August, September, so middle of October.
That's a big, yes, that's, that's merely just to cover them in case if they're in the incident that for some reason they could not be able to install the turf. Um, they're still covered and not, not liable for any damages.
Casey, nobody likes what you just said. Nobody likes that. Can you?
I don't know that we need to cover that.
No, this is merely to cover themselves. Um, and I, I totally understand to the track record that they had to get here. It took a little bit longer than what we anticipated. Um, so they want to make sure that, you know, because their liquidated damages, if they were to go over their contract, um, is eight hundred dollars per day.
So, can you, I know we have, this and the next are going to be on, on turf. And I know there's been a lot of chatter about what's going on, and I know you're working really hard on that, and it's not all your fault. Uh, can you explain what's going on? How this change order, this change order is for?
This is to extend the period, yeah.
To extend the period, but can you tell us what the status is of the three fields?
Sure. Uh, Benton is complete except for doing final safety checks and punch list items. Uh, currently, as of today, Lafayette, from the fifty-yard line to the end zone to the south, is laid. So, it's a big step. I mean, laying the turf itself, you'll see the gray and the white and, and the, the off-tone gray very quickly. The hard part is all the numbers, letters, hash marks, they all have to be cut in by hand.
And then what's going on with Central?
Central, I just spoke with Don Bolinger, the construction manager for ATG. His hope is to have a crew here this Friday.
That's the second crew, so while they're working on Lafayette, they'll be working on Central.
Yes.
So, will they be done before the first home gate?
If they get here and weather holding, yes.
And if they're not, where will they play their home game at?
They'll have the opportunity to play at Missouri Western or another alternate location.
Well, it'll be the alternate location.
That's not how it works.
I'll finish. Uh, the alternate location could be another school that's ready. Um, I will remind everybody that we do play at Missouri Western. It is three thousand dollars.
Let me ask a question. Is there any, is, is the company that did? Is the company that did the dirt work and the preparation that are late turning it over, they paying any penalty for not getting that turned over in time?
Um, at this time, we can discuss that internally, but we have not brought that to them, to them at this time.
And with these change orders, are we still in budget for our bonds?
Yes.
Okay.
So, at our last meeting, I asked to see that.
Yeah, we'll have those updated numbers at the next board meeting. We didn't want to give you anything right now because of the change from the next board meeting. And so, um, with these change orders coming in and, and talking through them to ensure that those were included in the next group of numbers. But Casey is correct that, that we are below, and those are restricted funds. So, any funds that were approved for the general obligation bond are restricted, have to be spent on brick and mortar items like the turf, the sidewalks, and the HVAC.
And all that online is viewable, correct?
Correct, that is viewable online. If you go to our website and go under Business Office and look at the, um, bond, there is a bottom button at the bottom of the screen that basically says, "Look at the, um, bond projections and what the original cost was and what's been charged to date." So, that is out there.
And you project that in total, that'll not go over that budget?
Correct.
Thank you.
Casey, can you continue enough?
Sure. Um, so, the, the other change order in that same group was for ATG as well. This is for to cover overtime, to work six twelve-hour days rather than the regular forty. Uh, with the six twelve-hour days gets us to where we are with Benton right now. Working the extra overtime to, to ensure that we make the deadline for the first games.
So, this is for, for ATG to?
For ATG, for the turf itself. The next item, is there any other questions, sorry, for those two? The next item is number eight. The turf change order for Mid-America Gulf. Um, that is, will be in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. That is for the stabilization of the track surface.
Out, out which?
At Lafayette, sorry.
That's okay.
Can you explain about the issue at Lafayette's track?
Sure. So, what we do, we do what we call a proof roll. Basically, we put twenty tons of gravel or whatever, it's having scaled out official. And we drive that, that truck around the circle or up and down the field, and you measure the deflection of the soil. Anything that exceeds a half inch to an inch of deflection, depending on the third party that's there to oversee the process, that they make a recommendation thus far after that of what we need to do in order to, uh, make the soil and everything stable enough to withstand the construction procedures. And Olson is the one that made that recommendation.
So, the unstable ground?
Mm-hmm.
And the overtime are unplanned?
Correct.
Issues because of rain or and the lack of finding that out ahead of time for the, for the bid?
Yes. Uh, before, ahead of, uh, before the bids and everything, we did do core soil samples, uh, which were very spotty here and there.
Right.
Um, the recommendation at that time was not to stabilize officially, but to redetermine once you reach that subgrade. They did do the, the roll test then. The subgrade was fine. Then with all the added rain and everything is when it really softened up, the expansive clay absorbed it. And over time, that's when it causes everything to move, causes the soft spots.
So, with a previous meeting, we drew ninety thousand dollars, and then this sixty thousand dollars. You'd said there's probably going to be some on the track. Even with that hundred and fifty thousand, we're going to be under?
Yes.
Well, that's a good job of managing that.
Had a good team.
Okay, you can continue.
Okay. Uh, the third one is number nine. It's the HVAC. This pertains to Edison, Mark Twain, and Eugene Field. Um, there's an array of costs that were not cleared. Uh, we were not able to predetermined, uh, but until the bones of the, the structure was basically opened up to see what we had. Um, that's what this, this change order is for. It is for change order number one, which would be at Eugene Field, the amount of five thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty cents. This is mainly, uh, some additional skilled labor, uh, hardware, and some additional piping, uh, for some of the, for the gas units. Um, change order number one for Edison will be thirty-eight thousand six hundred and six dollars and sixty-eight cents. This also covers labor and additional gas piping. Some carrier unit procurement, just we weren't able to, when they originally had, had the bid came out, a couple of the carrier units were not available. So, this is additional procurement for those. Um, and also, there's a large add-on for some electrical. That was unforeseen. Some of the walls, I will be honest, some of the walls were over two and a half feet thick. So, it's, it's definitely a great structure to be in. So it's, it's definitely a great structure to be in if there's a tornado, that's for sure. Uh, next change order is Mark Twain, change order number one, it's amount of sixty-eight thousand five hundred ninety-seven seventy-nine. The, uh, roof structure itself, the material, once we uncovered it, was a different material than what was spec'd out in the blueprints. Um, also, the curbs had an additional cost there, uh, for some modifications. Uh, the electrical scope increased as well, and there was a rooftop unit that was not identified correctly on the, on the drawings, uh, by the architect, which caused us to have to add another unit. So that's where the additional seventeen thousand cost, and then we had to, uh, also wire in some duct detectors and everything for the additional, which that is, if there's a fire, excessive heat, it alarms us with our fire system and shuts it down.
How much was the Mark Twain project in total?
Uh, I don't have the exact number, I believe it was one point two overall for the three.
Thank you.
We will be able to look at, at the total cost as we receive the information at the next meeting, right, Dr. Hedge Court?
It is correct.
Are there any additional questions?
So, how, what, what is the status of these three schools? Um, and really, all the schools?
Absolutely.
The last several years, we've gone to school and we've had to cancel, or we've had to do things because of heat, same thing for winter for cold. Where, where are we at with these schools, and I guess just, do you anticipate any of that happening, or?
I do not.
What's, what's mine?
Especially with the new systems, you know, where gas heat is a totally different, uh, totally different form of heat. Before, it was basically like the electric heat pump, um, now we have the BTUs to push out the heat. Um, with that being said, these are different types of units, that are not proprietary to that particular vendor. This is something that any HVAC contractor in this, in the city of St. Joseph can work on.
Do you feel like, so with Edison and Field and Mark Twain, are, they're gonna be ready to be cool by the time schools are?
So they're not gonna be a hundred percent ready, no. Um, Eugene Field, yes. Uh, Eugene Field, we started firing the equipment up, uh, this morning. Um, for the final turnover on it, we will be finished completely there. Um, Edison and Mark Twain, we've had some manufacturer issues with getting the units themselves. Um, so as of today, the, we had half of the curbs, which is what the rooftop unit set on at Mark Twain, showed up. Um, we're expecting the rest of the, we're expecting the remainder and all of the equipment, uh, to be here by the end of this week. Uh, that being said, we went ahead and took proper precaution, we put in some, you know, had to run some additional, uh, electrical services, um, updates, just to get, we put in temporary air conditioning. So every air, every space will be air conditioned.
Okay.
Yep.
That was my biggest concern.
Sure. Absolutely, ours as well.
I, I just have a question, um, so there, because I'm hearing, uh, the architect didn't do the right thing about the kind of air conditioner, and then we're having to pay overtime because of something that really wasn't a district issue, is there any way, or have you had conversations about, um, being able to hold some of those people accountable with issues that we're having to address?
Sure. Uh, I have not had that conversation with them, we've talked about the miss, why it was missed, um, some of it was just unforeseen.
Sure.
Um, some of it wasn't required at that time. Uh, the additional unit for, uh, Mark Twain was in oversight. Um, it was basically mixed up with another additional unit that was already there, which was not actually going to be staying.
Okay, I was just curious, because I feel like we're absorbing a lot of unforeseen costs, and I was just curious about who really is responsible in the long run.
Mr. Halm, I just remind the group that, you know, these are big projects, and they're even complicated by the fact that we got basically two, three months in the summer to get them done, and so, um, while we definitely want it to go well, and as planned, uh, we understand and appreciate all the effort you're trying to do to keep it on track, and I think, with regard to the football fields, if, if they all turn out like Benton did, uh, I think people are gonna be very happy. And so, thanks for keeping after it.
Yeah, thank you, uh, there's been a lot of great things that's came out of the twenty million dollars. Um, it's easy to focus it on just the turf, uh, all the issues that it's having, but we've also, uh, twenty-four other locations, we've put in a lot of fine arts theater stuff, um, there's a lot of kids that are affected in a positive way, so don't forget that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's it, Casey. If there are no more questions? Okay, Mr. Crowe?
Good evening. Um, attached, you will find, uh, several job descriptions for your review. Um, you'll see changes that are in red, excuse me, additions that are in red, and then changes were struck through. Um, our departments have reviewed these job descriptions because they are the experts within those positions, and they have made these recommendations. I can tell you, there are very few changes to the, uh, requirements to, um, assume this role, um, except for maybe some experience. Um, unfortunately, in this day and age in education, um, it's difficult to find these positions, so that'll probably explain why. I think there's a couple, they took out three to five years of experience, um, but none of the other degree requirements have been changed. If you have any questions, we'll be more happy to try and answer those.
Are there any questions, guys?
Thank you.
I guess there are none. Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Okay, Dr. Hedge Court, are you ready?
All right, so, last board meeting, I gave the board an update on our ASBR, uh, preliminary numbers for the, uh, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. And when discussing that, we had discussed that that would end at a ten point zero two percent, uh, reserve ratio. And so, uh, at that meeting, I, um, said that I would have a projection tool to kind of show, uh, where we've been in the past, and where we're looking to go to the future, one, um, if we had no idea that this was coming and, you know, we continued business as usual. Uh, and then another scenario where we look at some, uh, budget cuts in some certain areas, and how we can get back on track to our board policy DIAA of twenty percent. So, if you don't mind, if we can bring up, uh, one of the agenda items, um, on that budget, um, agenda, the, uh, projection tool, current reality? If we could, yeah, thank you. Okay, so this tool can be, uh, complicated to understand a little bit, so let me give a little bit of background. Um, in the upper right-hand corner under assumptions, um, those are the assumptions we're basing this off of for some of our revenues and expenses. Uh, the seventy-one hundred dollars is the state accuracy target, uh, it's our state payment and how that's calculated. Uh, the operating levy is the levy we have for operations outside of debt service, our debt service levy is not included in there, because our debt service, uh, fund is isolated just to paying our district debts, that's not included in any operations. Um, assessed valuation growth, we have two percent in non-reassessment years and three percent in reassessment years as our estimates. Five percent insurance increase over the year, and then a fourteen eighty Prop C estimate, uh, Prop C, just a reminder, is the state sales tax, uh, that comes back as a local, uh, revenue for schools. And so, if you look at the gray column right down the middle, that's the fiscal year that just ended. Um, now, just as a reminder, we'll have KPM onsite next month, those are our auditors that are gonna look over information. You might see some funds shift from one fund to the other, uh, but I'm confident in that ten point zero two percent, that that is what we're finishing for the year. And so, um, that, those auditors will give you their report, um, in November or December, and then you guys will, um, vote on approving that audit, and then that needs to be uploaded to DESI by December thirty-first, as those are actually points on our APR score, so, uh, just wanted to mention that as well. Um, if you look before FY twenty-five, you have all the previous years, those numbers are exactly on our ASBR. And so, if you go to DESI's website and look up ASBR for any school district, you can pull these numbers for any district, uh, in the state, and those are the exact numbers, so if you look at the very bottom row, if you could scroll down just a little bit, that's gonna show our final reserve ratio, um, for that year. So you can see in FY twenty, FY twenty-one, FY twenty-two, FY twenty-three, we're in good shape, we're all above twenty percent. Matter of fact, in FY twenty-three, we ended at twenty-eight point eight one percent. Um, and then, in FY twenty-four, if you look at, um, the line right here that looks at our surplus deficit, and I'm gonna put a little red dot up here, that is where we went negative in our Fund One and Fund Two, to eleven point nine million dollars. And then last year, for, um, this fiscal year, we were ten point one in the red. And how did we get there? Um, many different things. Uh, one, we talked about just the delay in federal funding. Um, I'm happy to report that the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four federal funding came in in late July, so that has been paid. And we anticipate the twenty-four, twenty-five federal funding coming in within the next month or two. So, um, those dollars that we talked about, um, in last board meeting that weren't on that, um, FY twenty-five ASBR, have come in, but of course, because it's after June thirtieth, they have to go on the FY twenty-six. And so, that is also reflected in a higher federal revenue amount right there. Uh, you can see it's twenty-six million plus for FY twenty-six, where in the previous year it was only fourteen, that's the timing of those federal funds. So, uh, those dollars are there, it's just in a different fiscal year. Um, the thing is, uh, looking forward, these estimates that you're seeing are, are probably different than what you saw in June. Um, in June, in that preliminary budget, uh, revenues were probably pretty similar, but it was our expenses, um, on estimates in certified salaries and non-certified salaries. So, if you look at these lines right here, on our expenses side, we have our certified salaries and our non-certified salaries, um, those numbers compared to June, um, are higher, um, because of how those were calculated. And so, I feel like the way we've calculated these numbers, now, we did have the luxury of seeing the ASBR for FY twenty-five, so we were working on more certainties, where in June, they didn't have that information yet. Um, but again, I feel like budgeting going forward, we will have, um, better estimates for what those salaries and benefits look like. Um, you can see the others' expenses compared to previous years, and then projected right now, uh, we're projected to be at a two point eight million dollar deficit to finish FY twenty-six. Now, remember, that's if we do nothing. Uh, we have already been busy, um, working internally with a lot of different departments, schools, looking to see how we can, um, come back to a twenty percent, um, reserve ratio. Now, what I have on the next page.
Can I, can I interrupt you before you go on?
For sure.
Um, 'cause, 'cause this one won't be affected by the future, but two thousand twenty-four, I, I was, I wasn't on the board, I'm not saying that, but did we realize that we have a twelve million dollar shortfall that year? And did we realize that our, um, I, I've never seen that our, um, reserve slipped to seventeen point seven two. I thought we'd always declared that it was over twenty percent.
So the reason that went to seventeen point seven two, and you probably don't remember going to that, because it wasn't at that level until just last month. Um, in June, Dr. Seeger's asked the district and the board to reclassify M and M surtax money from Fund Two to Fund Four to pay for all the Fund Four projects. Um, he did not anticipate that having to go below twenty percent. Um, that response to that was his valid opinion that it would not go. When they started calculating the numbers and it went, it ended up did going below twenty percent to pay for all those Fund Four items. One thing I do want to mention, and, and I'll talk about this a little bit in the tax rate, uh, calculations that I have in the next agenda item, is we do not have a Fund Four levy. Um, we have zero cents in our Fund Four levy. That can be assigned by the board, but if you'd have a Fund Four levy, you have to pull, either have a Fund One that's lower to have in Fund Four, um, to do that. So typically, what St. Joe has done is they have done the max transfer allowable from DESI from Fund One to Fund Four, or you can classify your M and M surtax in different funds. In the past, we have not had to classify our M and M surtax in Fund Four because we had the balance and the dollars to do that in Fund Four. Well, because it was spent down so low, that's why he requested us to do that. Um, and if we didn't do that, we would end the negative in Fund Four balance, and you cannot have a negative, uh, balance in a fund. And so, we had to make those M and M surtax transfers to be able to end Fund Four in the positive.
But what, but wasn't that the activity that took place at the end of fiscal year twenty-five?
Correct.
So what about twenty-four? Did, did the board realize that we had a eleven million dollar deficit the year before?
It didn't, but it didn't happen until that shift.
Didn't happen, yeah. No, so I guess there's no.
Like, it's, it's the timing of it.
Right.
Right, it's.
How it looked on paper probably would have looked different because they would have shown it out of a Fund Four balance, instead of it having to come out of Fund Two. And so, it would have looked like it was just a lower balance in Fund Four, instead of, once it comes out of Fund One or Fund Two, it's hitting your reserve ratio, because that's how it's calculated.
Yeah, thank you. We'd never shown, we're rounding twenty.
Right.
Well, and we, we weren't until that.
Well, right.
Right, we weren't until those M and M surtax transfers, but if we hadn't have done that, we'd ended Fund Four in the negative, and you can't do that. So we had to make the transfer to do it.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, so on the next, um, document within that agenda item, um, this is, is not, just, I want to make a declaration on this real quick. This is not what I am necessarily suggesting for a budget recovery plan. This is just giving an idea of what a recovery plan could look like, uh, meaning that this is just one scenario. The beauty of this document is if you want to see any other scenarios than the ones I have listed here, we can put those in, and then it'll show us, um, how we will end the reserves for each fiscal year. So for example, again, I still have two to three percent, um, growth on our assessed valuation up there, we could change that to three to four percent. This last year, uh, we had seven point eight six percent growth in our assessed valuation, uh, up there at the top. And so, I am, um, happy to also report that our, when we look at the, um, annual tax rate collection rate, uh, we have ninety-nine percent. That is a great collection rate, the people in our community, uh, pay their taxes, pay their bills on time, and that is a huge benefit to our districts, not every district and community is like that. So, um, I always want to thank our community for that tax collection rate being so high for our district and, and other public entities within our community. And so, we can change any type of scenario, um, up there, but the scenario I have here is that, um, the district is gonna look to cut, um, five hundred thousand dollars out of purchase service and five hundred thousand dollars out of supplies for FY twenty-six, which is the year we're in, and FY twenty-seven, and then look in, look to reduce salary, um, costs, three million dollars in FY twenty-seven, which is next year, and three million in FY twenty-eight. So I don't have any salary reduction costs for this year, although we already have realized some by just reallocating positions internally. Um, we have some high school positions that we will reallocate instead of having to hire new, and then also some other areas. So, we have already seen some savings in FY twenty-six, and we can spread that out amongst different years, and the great thing about this tool is you can see how we recover, um, from where we're at and going forward. So, we can get more aggressive, we can flatten it out, there's a lot of different scenarios we can look at. Um, but in, in essence, what I'm trying to say is, between the million dollars in FY twenty-six and twenty-seven with purchase service, the million dollars in FY twenty-six and twenty-seven in supplies, and the six million dollars over two years in salaries, we're looking at about eight million dollars of cuts, um, in the next couple of years to be able to come out of a situation we're in and start increasing. And so, if you look.
Can we, can you, can you go back to this part?
Yeah, absolutely.
Going so fast.
Yeah, sorry.
Practice, it's fine. So, five hundred thousand reduction to purchase services for twenty-six and twenty-seven, so is that a total of one million?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and then same with the next. The three million salary cost reduction is three million, you said for twenty-seven?
Correct.
And three million for twenty-eight?
That is correct.
So that, those numbers are not right. Right?
So we have three million for twenty-seven here, and then three million for twenty-eight here.
Okay, but I'm just saying, like, in the, in assumptions, in this part, so it says twenty-six and twenty-seven?
I'm sorry, you're right, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Okay, just want to make sure I was understanding that.
That is correct.
And as far as the, the changes that have been made so far, that there's been some staffing changes, can we get an update on that?
Sure.
I, I don't know that we've gotten one, but we've gotten a lot of emails, and I, I don't know if I've missed it.
Sure.
It would just be nice, you know, I know that there's been some, I mean, I've heard questions of like, this happened and this happened, I'm like, I don't know.
Absolutely, I, um, in my weekly academic report, when we noticed the certification at some of our sites, um, I just, uh, wrote a, a description about maximizing our resources, um, to use more efficiently in our required core, um, high school classes, but if you would like a breakdown of that, I'm sure, Mr. Crowe and I can work on that.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to see what, you know, trust but verify, if you're saying, you know, we've already made some changes through attrition or through just moving things around, efficiency, whatever, if we can see what's going where, um, because then that helps to understand kind of from a budget perspective of, okay, we're not filling that, if we get questions about it, we're not filling it, um, those types of things.
Give us news will also be on the personnel report.
Is it a, is it a reasonable or unreasonable, um, target to say we show being one point eight million short in this year that we're in now, that we could, um, we could actually break even?
I think with our work, we can get that to. I think with our work, we can get that to a positive number by the end of the year. I really do, I really believe that.
Yeah, and I, I know I'm putting you on the spot on that, but there'll be an upcoming time where we do some kind of budget revision.
That's correct. So in October, I will have a budget amendment to show updated information. Not only will I have the budget in a format you've had traditionally, but I'll update this forecasting model to show where those changes came from. And it's going to be more than five hundred thousand dollars in purchase service supplies. That was the original goal as we started working towards this. We've been able to get more than that initially. Like I said, this is just one scenario to kind of show one way, we can get out of it. But that October budget amendment will have more specifics on, okay, here's where we believe we're going, here's the areas we were able to reduce. And, you know, we're working hard through that and having a lot of tough internal discussions about, you know, ensuring that the things we are looking at don't touch the core of the classroom. That is, that is like the holy grail. We have to make sure that it's the furthest away from the classroom possible when we look at something to, you know, maybe not renew or reduce. You know, not everything is necessarily, you know, just totally cut, but it might be something where we can take a, a small reduction in something and not, not do as much as a supply order or purchase service, or, you know, if you have the elite edition of some sort of software program, can it be the standard edition, you know? Things like that.
Thank you.
Can you explain about the three million over the two years?
Sure, that was just an arbitrary number that I chose, just to show how we would be able to move out of our situation of having ten percent reserve ratio. If you look right above that three million actually on that sheet, you will see the percentage of salaring benefits that come out of our operational budget. And so when you're looking, and you're looking at your budget and you're thinking of a piece of the pie, three-quarters of our pie is salaring benefits. So when you're looking for areas to reduce to be able to get back on track, that is the biggest area to look at and the area that really drives your budget. So when, when you are, you know, deficit spending, yes, you can look at supplies and you can look at purchase services, but you can only bring those down so much because at some point, you know, we have to replace our phone system in some of our schools. You know, I was working with our technology director, Jake, and we were able to, you know, push that out a couple of years. But at some point, we have to. So there's only so many supplies and purchase services you can cut until you have to look at those salaring benefits to be able to move the needle to get back on, on track to twenty percent reserves.
Can I add to that? That three million dollars is, to get to that point is not to cut staff. It is to take a look at staff members when they leave through attrition, things like that, to make sure that we are utilizing our resources effectively. So we are not looking to cut staff. I know it's, came out in some articles that we are going to cut staff, and that is not the case.
That is a budget reduction in salaries and benefits. Meaning, if somebody retires, someone leaves the district, and you absorb that position, you have saved money in salaring benefits because you've absorbed that position.
I think, and I, I understand from a business perspective of what you're saying, I get it. But I think it would, we'd be very hard pressed for staff who are currently working, who are not leaving through attrition, to not feel like it's a reduction in staff. Because where I once had additional support and resources from colleagues, when that person leaves, I don't. So I just want us to remember that there are people behind the numbers. I, I know that you guys do. I just think that as we sit here and we look at these numbers and we say, three hundred salary cost reduction, it's just through attrition. Well, that's support to staff that are currently working that they're not going to have anymore. And, you know, whether or not we think it's going to make things more efficient, time will tell. But I think potato, potato.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent, but if I'm not forthright in showing-
No, I totally understand.
I have to state, you know, what it's going to take to get there. And so I don't want to sugarcoat it, but I also am trying to be sensitive to the situation like you mentioned. So totally understand that these are, you know, folks that we rely on to teach our kids every day, but just from a number perspective, that is a ballpark number that we need to reduce somewhere.
For sure, I just think we need to, to your point, we need to remember that these are people and making sure that we can serve our kids. And then I know everybody's on that page, I just don't want us to get so far off into numbers that we forget about the people.
I had also emailed everyone on the board. As we were getting lots of information in the past two, three weeks or so, there was a lot of information. A lot of, a lot of information that was unexpected. And I had asked members of the board about their opinions about an audit. I think only two, three people responded. I know that you mentioned our last third-party audit was about a couple of years ago. Only I'm thinking with all of the confusion about the numbers and about the issues, I think it would be a good opportunity. It's all new administration, it's a new start in order to begin off on the right, I guess, on the right foot. What do you guys think?
Well, just to clear some things up on an audit, so we are audited annually, is a requirement of the state. And so we had KPM onsite in June that did the preliminary pieces where they're requesting data and we upload documents. So they'll look through those and they'll come back onsite for four days in September is when they're scheduled, put together the information, they will present to you hopefully by November, you know, sometimes it's December, but then have a formal audit and show any type of findings that they might have at that December meeting, and it has to be uploaded to D E C for the thirty-first. St. Joe was audited by the state in two thousand fifteen. And so that audit is still online. If you go to state auditors often website to look at that. I actually went through and looked at that today, even though it's ten years old. And so I've, I've seen so many improvements that St. Joe has done over the years. Matter of fact, you have an audit finding graph in your folder that shows when, you know, how many audit findings we've had. And so you can see in the last five years that we have zero for that. And so I guess one thing I would ask is to let KPM, you know, do their job and, and have that audit and really question them, really ask them if you have specific things you'd like them to look at when they're here onsite for them to do so. And then when they report to you, if you still aren't satisfied with what they've come back with, then at that time, we can ask the state to voluntarily come in and do an audit. Now, I do want to clear up something on that. So KPM does what's called a financial statement audit, and the state would do something called a performance audit. So two different types of audits. A performance audit is going to look at things like, do you have a disaster recovery plan for technology? Do you force password changes? When, when, you know, some, after six months, three months, whatever your policy is, do you stick to that? They'll randomly pull P-card statements and make sure everything on the itemized receipt matches up, and there's nothing purchased on there that doesn't match up with board policy. They'll make sure that everybody's been evaluated in your district. They'll go from the superintendent all the way down to a part-time parent and make sure that, you know, you're doing proper evaluations. All those process and procedure things that you're supposed to be doing, it's less numbers. So on their website, they even talk about entities that are required for a financial statement audit. They will actually look that over first so they don't have redundancies and then drive into the performance piece. And then there's a, there's, there's all sorts of different types. And so I just want to make sure, if we want the state to come in, that it's a performance audit and not a financial statement audit is a traditional audit that we give them.
No, I did not mention anything about the state. I wasn't specific about that at all.
I think, I think for, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, then another option is you could hire a third party, similar to KPM, and request the type of audit you'd want, whether it's a financial statement or performance. And then if they offer those services, you could do that. I, I was in a district previously that did have a state audit. If, if they come in, that cost was about seventy thousand dollars. I don't know what a third party would be. It depends on the length and the depth of what you're looking for in that, honestly. And then that could be negotiated or put in some, some sort of RFP.
So the, the, the budget reductions that we're talking about making, those aren't just through attrition, some of them are through building, repurposing, right?
So one example would be like the math teacher at Lafayette and Central.
Okay.
Right, so as class sizes change, as you have different needs, they, instead of hiring someone new, they saw, looked at sections and looked at numbers and were able to move somebody based off that.
But we're also talking about changing the use of our high schools and our elementary schools. We're, we're talking about making those decisions in the future, most likely.
Right, so on the, on the horizon, we have a meeting with the O L R on Wednesday for them to give us back the feedback. And then I believe that's going to be shared at the board meeting in-
In August.
August, okay.
You guys asked me with coming up with what Central and Benton would look like compared to Central and Lafayette, pros and cons of those, and then cost differences. So we will plan to have that at the August board meeting.
And we had, previous to all this, that conversation was about doing, moving to a two-high-school model, better use of our elementary schools, reducing those in number. We were talking about doing that in a year, two years. That's going to have to happen more likely sooner than later.
We have a sense of urgency, for sure, with our reserves being at ten point oh-two percent.
So, so my, so my concern is, so I, I think that you all have done a good job of explaining this to the board. I think, I, I hope and trust that most of us understand what's going on and the urgency of the matter. But the general public doesn't. If I was a member of the general public, I would probably be saying something like, here we go again. You know, you couldn't trust your numbers in June, but now you do trust your numbers in July. So my thought about a third-party audit was the latter of what you described. I'll be honest, I'm not real happy with KPM to bring them back in. I mean, you've explained how, how they could have not seen, you know, the issue and the accuracy of the reporting. But I think to be able to maintain some sort of trust with the public, we need, we need to bring in a third party. Not, not to do, not to do a full-scale, you know, P-card, all of this, but to provide legitimacy to what you all are saying. I think we all know our community well enough to know that we, we need that. I, I think we need that. So again, it's not, it would not be to cast blame. It would just be, we're going to have to make some really difficult decisions. And again, if I was out on the outside watching, I would say, you didn't, you didn't have the right numbers a month ago, but now you do, and now you're making all of these decisions. So that's, that's just where I'm coming from.
Just know that the district I was at that had the state audit come in, it took a year and a half.
Oh, yeah, I'm not telling, I'm not trying to open the door for the state for any reason.
It, it would just, and I don't know how long a third party might be out as far as being able to have the resources to do it.
I, I think, so what, I, I guess what I envision is, you know how you've been here for forty-one days?
Yeah, I have?
Yeah. I would just like someone that has no, you know, is not employed by the school district, is not under the guise of, of the school board or the superintendent, to come in and say, yes, they're correct. Yes. So whatever took you for, less than forty-one days to find, I would just like a second opinion that says, yes, that's correct.
We don't think we can get that from the audit that we've already got scheduled.
I just, I just feel like with KPM, it, where were they? Where were they? You know what I mean? Like, how, how do you have, how are you paying? I mean, I get it, I know, I know, you're like, I told you. I get that, I get that. But it's kind of like going back to the, the group and saying, hey, like, you missed this last time. Could you, could you double-check again? Like, again, I think KPM has some viable reasons why they're like, well, we didn't look at that, or we looked at it in this way, so we wouldn't have seen it. But somebody, it only took two weeks to see it. So if we could just get a CPA or an accounting firm to come in, look through, poke around, and say, yes, second opinion, yes. And, and I'm not saying for this to take two months, three months, six months, we don't have that much time. But for someone to actually be able to come in and say, what your school district is telling you is correct, and yes, you need to move with a sense of urgency.
Mike?
The only, the only objection I have is just the money, right? So if we spend, we're, we're in these money problems, and if we talk about spent dropping fifty or seventy or whatever thousand it is on another audit, I, I wonder if we couldn't do it by a little more directed instruction to the existing auditor. And, and, you know, I'll, I'll say this, Dr. Hedgecore, hats off. I mean, I, I have desired something like this, you know, a projection tool, and something that we don't have to remember, okay, well, this year has a, two things hit in one month, so it's going to look different. So you think you're on budget, but you're really not. And, and take all that out of it for us and, and, and show clearly where we're headed. And, and obviously, that'll change as taxes change, dollars come in. But, but this is, this is very good improvement.
One option could be, the director of MSBA, Linda Quinley, has done things like that before, where she has come in and looked at the district's financials. I know it'd be a lot cheaper than seventy thousand dollars. And for her to look through things, look at our projections, look how we have done things in the past, and maybe give some recommendations or things like that. And she'd be a third-party outside group, she's the director of MSBA, she understands school finance.
Yeah.
She was a CPA, wasn't she?
Absolutely, yeah. Former CFO of Columbia School District and Kansas City, Missouri School District. So she understands complex financing, understands federal budgets with K C Mo in Columbia. And so that would be one option, as you guys look at options.
That would, that, and that would suffice for me. Like, I don't need us to go out and do an RFP, and, and I don't need us to beleaguer this point. I just think, given the history of the district, the decisions we're going to have to make, that we need to be able to show that we found it, we're addressing it, and now we have to make decisions.
No doubt. The narrative already in part is, hey, who, who took all the money? You know? I don't believe that for a second, but somebody like an MSBA rep telling us that would, would, would probably serve the public well.
Agreed.
Well, I think MSBA would be great to do it, too.
Good idea, but did I ask, does D E C do this, too? Do they do that?
So that's what, that's what he's talking about.
That's the-
That's the state.
Yeah, okay. That's the seventy thousand?
Missouri State Auditor, Mr. Patrick and his group.
So in your lengthy time with us, how confident are you are, are with KPM? And are they under contract with us? Is that going to be up soon to swap that out?
Sure, I, I think KPM is very confident. So one thing to remember about a financial statement audit is they're always looking in the past. And so when they look at the past, they are truly just looking, okay, here's the revenues, here's our expenses. Are they coded correctly? Do our bank statements match? They don't necessarily do an analysis to say, okay, the CFO predicted, here's a preliminary budget. How far off were you from your predictions? And so they only do years that are completed, so they haven't even looked at FY twenty-six at all. That's not even on their radar. They're only looking at twenty-four, twenty-five, which is completed, so they're always looking in the past, always looking to that. And so their financial statement audit just doesn't look at future projections, how you budget, where that's kind of what got us in trouble here, not necessarily procedural things about how we coded things.
But, but I still, I still was surprised. And, and again, I, I, I understand how you explained it last time, that they weren't looking at the minutia specifically around title funds. But even just the large reduction in title funds, I would have hoped would have been some sort of conversation with the board or conversation, you know, I don't know, I don't know what the process has been with board leadership. My experience has always been that the auditor will come in and go over the audit with the superintendent and the board leadership and say, here are some things. There may be a little, there may be a little bit more candid in those meetings about like, hey, you might want to like fix this up. I don't know if we've been doing that. We should start if we haven't. But that, that would have been either in that meeting or in the governance letter where you say, we're not turning this in on time and it's a reduction in revenue.
Something I always do with our auditors, I, I tell them, give me three places we can improve, because we can always improve. You know, there isn't an audit out there from the state auditor's office that lists organization, even if they mark them excellent or good, that doesn't have some recommendations. And so that's one thing I ask them, is, hey, what are some things we can get better? And we, we looked at, but those, so.
You know, like I said, we've, we've gotten the, I typically just look at the over, over, you know, not this, obviously. But I just would have expected either a conversation with board leadership at some point or something in the governance letter. And there, there wasn't that.
Right.
Don't you think, and I agree with, I agree with you, and I tried to say that last meeting, don't you think some of the COVID money kind of masked the change in federal money? So that the federal money, it was harder to judge what did you get this year versus last year because you had COVID money in the previous years?
It, it did all intermingle, and some people didn't quite claim some of those CARES and S R three funds early enough. And then there was an extension, and then federal government announced that they weren't going to honor the extension, and then the extension came back, and so- And so, you know, there, there's a lot of districts right now that are looking at their financials and their, their expenses because the federal dollars have just dwindled in a lot of those areas. And so, and, and we never expected SRR three dollars from COVID to stay forever, you know, I don't think anybody did. But, as they're going away, now reality's hit, right? And so.
Well, a little bit masked a comparative year, you know what I mean?
Right, yeah.
The, the other thing I'm interested in, and I'm not trying to change subjects on that, I think we've kind of reached a consensus on that. But I, is, um, I'll be anxious to see a regular monthly budget. So that, um, so that we have, I like the fact that we have this projection out, particularly in the case we're in. But I think it's gonna be important that we go through a regular monthly budget too, um, with the same kind of expectations. So that we, um, so that we have better visibility and understanding of how we're getting along.
And projections will always improve. What I bring to you in October, I believe will be more accurate, because we'll know our enrollment. The last Wednesday of September is, um, your count day for students, and so we'll know. So that'll help us then project more accurately what our state revenue is gonna be. Where right now, we are doing estimates based off previous demographic reports, so.
I just wanted to kind of get that in.
Sure, absolutely.
You had also mentioned, um, so by, by twelve thirty-one, we have to have the information into DCE. How does that impact, how does our financial situation impact our APR?
So really, it's just three procedural steps. We have to have our audit approved by the board and uploaded into DCE by December thirty-first.
And so we get points for that?
We do get a point for that?
And we always do that, so.
ASBR submitted by August fifteenth. And I am blanking on one other that's procedural that we have always gotten.
So you don't, you don't anticipate us, I guess my question is, is, you don't anticipate, because of this downward turn in the finances, you don't anticipating us lose any, losing any APR funds?
Oh, absolutely not.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's truly procedural of, hey, did you turn it in? Yes or no? Oh, sorry, core data submission for October is the last one.
Okay, so board, um, everyone's looking at Linda Quinley then?
I guess the board day, yeah.
And if you want some think time, and then we come back to the board meeting to formally, or whatever.
If you're able to get some information on it, as much as like, um, cost and procedure and such?
Yeah, that's what I'll do. If the board pleases, I'll contact Linda, ask her what that procedure looks like, and kind of give you a plan of, of MSBA coming in and doing a review, and share that with you at the next board meeting.
And I think if, you know, I think at the last meeting, we had asked for a corrective action plan, and you're, you've probably found some things. But if, if Linda can kind of give her, if you guys can kind of work on, you know, if she can say, yes, these are the things that you need to do, or yes, this is, we'll correct these, I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah, I'll ask her to really hone in on some areas you guys have mentioned in your questions so far.
Perfect, any other comments?
Joe, board, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation for a budget which was really hard.
No problem.
Okay, next is also you, Dr. Hedgecore.
Okay, so, uh, the next, uh, information we have here is our tax rate. In August, uh, we set the tax rate for the school district. And so you can see on the agenda item that I have that. If you wouldn't mind bringing that up for me again, that'd be awesome, thanks. I have what our total tax rate would most likely be for next year. Now, we are still confirming these numbers with our state auditor's office. So that's why it says draft, but, uh, I anticipate these numbers being the same when I come back in two weeks at our board meeting. But the total tax rate would be four point nine one six three, which is identical to the tax rate we had last year. Uh, you can see how those break out in our different levies. So we have our normal operating levy. We have our temporary operating levy, um, that expires, um, in the two thousand twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-nine school year. And then we have our debt service levy. And so, down below, you can see that my proposal is that, of course, the normal and temp would be in Fund One. And then in Fund Three would be our debt service. And so one thing, um, that you do have in your packet is you have some calculation sheets. And so, these numbers aren't just, um, you know, pulled out of a hat. You have to put in your assessed valuation from the counties that you serve into the state auditor's offices pro forma. And basically, it will spit out the maximum tax rates that you are able to levy in your district. And so, um, just to note that the normal and the temp levy, I do have at the authorized maximum. But the debt service levy is about close, not quite ten cents, I was a little shy of that, but almost ten cents below the level that could be legally leveled. It's, uh, called a voluntary rollback. And so, even though it could be closer to sixty-seven cents, after doing analysis with Raymond James, who is our municipal council, thank you, municipal advisor, sorry, fifty-seven zero one will handle our debt and our debt service. So, we are doing that to ensure that our tax rate remains unchanged for next year from the previous year. And I just wanted to point out that part, um, in that information. So, um, in the past, also, LJ Hart was the one who was our municipal advisor, and they charged us a ten thousand dollar annual fee to calculate the tax rate and, and have other type of consultation. And so, we no longer utilize LJ Hart for that. You have me, so, here's our tax rate.
So can you explain the operating, the temporary operating levy and what that is going to look like in the future?
Sure. So the normal operating levy is, um, an operating levy that is with the district that never sunsets. Meaning that, um, that, that never ends, it's always based on your assessed valuation and how your voters approve, um, different levies that have come out throughout the years, like, um, like your Prop C waiver that you had. Uh, your temporary levy was a levy that sunsets, meaning that it has a certain period and, and then it expires. And so, um, that was last renewed, and again, you know, forty-one days, I've been on the job. But, uh, correct if I'm wrong, it was the twenty-two, twenty-three year, one year early, that I think they asked for that renewal. Even though it, it sunsetted in twenty-three, twenty-four. So, give that five more years, that will sunset or end again, um, in the twenty-eight, twenty-nine, um, school year, that the district would need to go out and ask the public to renew that for another period of time, whether it was five years, um, or beyond for that. And then your debt service levy is based upon the amount that you owe outstanding on your bonds, what your debt service fund balance is, and then your ability to pay that, that's how that is calculated separate. So, um, it, from state statute, anything in your debt service fund has to be a separate bank account. That levy acts as a separate, um, fund generator or revenue. And that can only go in that account, and only expenses to pay your debt can come out of that account. I hope that's what you were kind of going to do.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify when that sunset is happening. And, you know, obviously, we need to be mindful of that. If you're going to voters and asking for anything, then you wanna be in good fiscal shape, and we currently aren't. So, um, I just think that's important to be mindful of for the future.
But folks that don't have a sunset, there wouldn't be a temporary operating levy. That, that money in theory would be up in the normal offering.
Right, it would. The mo, usually when you, um, to be honest, this is an odd situation. I don't see this that much with a five-year sunset. Typically, when people do a temporary operating levy, they're doing it for the, the payment period of a building, for example. And so, um, let's say, for example, there was a new school need to be built. We might have a temporary levy for twenty years to pay that note. And then once that note came off, the levy came off too. To see it operational and not be coincide with some sort of building project where that payment comes off, means that that, that sixty cents is used to, you know, staff our schools, you know, pay for purchase services and supplies. So, you, it, it's an odd situation we have here with that temp levy being every five years to be renewed.
Are there any additional questions? Okay, if there are none, our next Board of Education meeting is in two weeks, right here. August the twenty-fifth. Is there a motion to adjourn into open session?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mike, is there a second? Thank you, Jennifer. Whenever you're ready.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns? Ms. Lanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Okay, and we are adjourning into open, but if you can give us a five-minute break? I call this meeting back to order. Roll call, please, Ms. Donna.
Ms. Lanny?
Uh, what am I doing?
Roll call.
Uh, yeah, I'm here. Who, so who came to my station?
Who?
Oh, okay.
Mr. Richmond?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Chesney?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Miller? Ms. Kearns?
Yeah.
Okay, audience participation. Each speaker has up to three minutes. We'll be using a timer. All we ask is that everyone remain respectful as individuals are speaking. If you're not able to do that, um, people will act accordingly. Okay, number one speaker. Dr. Hedge.
Dr. William A. Hedge. I'm a person who speaks to the point and gets to the point. I think you know why we're all here, because of the articles that have been in the paper, and it seems like there've been dissension and confusion on the board. And so I want to speak to that matter, because I think it's important for the pu, public school district of the St. Joseph's School District. Uh, we're talking about leadership, talking about leadership. And we're looking at why, why change in leadership? And if there's a change in leadership, because the seven people on the board will make the decision of who's going to be the president of the school board. Now, here's my question, and here's my challenge to those who are here on the school board. Public funds ought to be sta, ought to stay for public education. Public funds ought to be for public education. So whoever leads the board, I'll challenge you with this. The governor, Governor Quixote, has taken fifty million dollars of public education funds to give to private schools, vouchers, and for individuals who want tax breaks to send their students to other schools and other institutions, and that's fine. I have nothing wrong, nothing wrong with that. But don't take public funds for people who want to be elitist or people who want, or who want to be selective in where they educate their children. If there are public dollars and public funds, they need to stay in public schools. So, the other thing that we have to look at when we talk about public monies, we have to look at the fifty million dollars, for example, that's been, that's been either, it's already been done, or it's, or it's planned to be done. Those fifty million dollars need to be put back in public education. We just heard all the deficits that we have in our St. Joseph's public schools. Put that money back in public education and see if that will help the situation that we're in. Not just our district, but districts throughout this, throughout, uh, the state of Missouri. So as we look at that, and as we move forward, I hope whoever, even with the superintendent and her staff, with the pub, with the school board, whoever, that you would, if you are cozy with the governor and his staff at the state of Missouri, say, put our money back into public education and add a little bit more to it, and see what our, see what our school district can do. We are public, it's the St. Joseph's Public School District, and we want public funds for public school district. That's what we need to do, thank you. Oh, I do want to say this as well. We will be watching, and we will vote, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hedge. Lois Hedge?
I'm related to him. President Williams and board members, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak to you here today. When I heard this, about this meeting and the purpose for which it was called, it struck it struck me that it's, it's kind of out of place. With all the serious problems and situations that we have in our school district, I found it kind of ironic that we're having this, uh, thinking about having a board change president at the beginning of the school year when, when I know that there are many, many things that, that need to go on right now. I, I read, uh, that this was a special meeting and it was called for the purpose of reorganizing the board leadership, which means changing the president and I guess other officers. Uh, the president, who is Latonya Williams, the president, who is an African-American, the president, who is an African-American female. That sounds like a power grab to me. I, I do believe that, uh, Ms. Williams received the most votes from the people when she ran in the election. But because we are here, she's in the eyes of those who would have a change and, and we're not understanding why that is. We don't know everything. I don't know everything about the board, but, but I do know that everybody else on the board is white. This is so divisive with our country like it is now. This, this just adds to that. It's here, it's here, it's here, it's here in our neighborhood, it's in St. Joseph's. We all, we all are acting like we don't see it, but we see it. But what we do, or what we will not do, is stand back and just let things happen. We cannot be there. So, uh, I urge the board, the citizens, and those of you who want quality education for public schools in St. Joseph, Missouri, to continue to support the board, whoever your president is. But let's not replace the president because of who she is.
Thank you, Ms. Hedge. Dakota Allen.
Good evening. My name is Dakota. I am a first-year elementary teacher here in St. Joseph's School District. Um, thank you. Um, I'm here to speak out against the motion for a special meeting. Last school year, I had the privilege of substituting, and I believe nine or ten of the elementary schools across this district, only missing a handful before I took a full-time position as a special education para. That being said, I had the opportunity to watch hundreds of your staff members at work. I've watched as they moved through their day with one focus: students. The student-first mentality is thriving in your school district? No, thanks to the school board. In my brief time in St. Joe, I quickly began familiarizing myself with the district and board operation, and I asked my peers how they felt. And you should be embarrassed by the answers I received. The teachers watched these meetings like an episode of The Real Housewives of St. Joseph's. Many of you ran on being student-first. This, this is not student-first. Students get here in one week. Teachers like myself are spending hundreds of dollars of my own money to get my classroom ready. And you want to be focused on a change of leadership. The time for that was after the election. You had an opportunity to do the top two years of your life. And I really want to know what's changed since then. There's an unelected member of the board now, so are you trying to use the unelected member to take power for yourself? So who is magically more suited to take this position now? Because I'm not seeing them. A week before school starts, this is the last thing a school board that a student-first would be focused on. How about we look into the millions of dollars in funding deficits, the tragedy that is our testing scores, or how about welcoming first-time teachers? I know some of your seats were bought and paid for by Herzog. But I need you to understand that you don't have to do a darn thing, they say. It is your seat, and it is time for you to reclaim it and start being student-first. The behavior of this board does nothing to inspire your staff to stay. First and last-year teachers exist because of situations like this. We're facing budget deficits, evidence of massive clerical oversight by our administration, and discussing millions in cuts to pay. Whether you're eliminating positions or not, you're talking about our pay. And the staff that navigates welcoming your students is having to listen to all this happen a week before they get here. You want to make the only black woman on your board the scapegoat for mistakes made by somebody else entirely instead of working together for once to solve an issue and hold the party to have busy areas of responsibility for title funding and other areas accountable for their actions. Friends, my elementary students would know this is wrong. Step up or step down.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Sarah Hoshlander. I know I pronounced that wrong, I apologize.
Y'all don't need this anyway. Stay there. I'm going to read into the record an email spent to each of the board members. "I write to notify all the members of the Board of Education that I fully support Latonya Williams and her role as board president. She is duly elected and serves the community with honor and integrity. It is outrageous to me that in this environment some board members choose to embrace this petty and nonsensical approach. Get back to work for the district and stop this chicanery." I had a "thank you" response for a comment from Mr. Moore. Mr. Richmond commented, "Sarah, thanks for your note, and I value your input. I'm committed to working to support our children, teachers, staff, and community. I take this responsibility very seriously and will do my best. Thanks for your input and interest in the district." Mr. Richmond, I'm going to hold you to that comment. You stated that you would act in the interest of public education when you took this position. I expect you to defend that position or answer why. Ms. Lanning passionately supported duly-elected board president Latonya Williams. I didn't have responses from the rest of you. Do Superintendent McGinnis. Herzog has spent six figures to defeat our school initiatives. Herzog is not a partner. This district stands on the precipice of losing our independence and the nature of our public education. Your majority dogged support of Herzog and their edicts will fail. We will fight you every step of the way."
Thank you, Ms. Hoshlander. Joanne Wong.
I am speaking to express my unwavering support for Latonya Williams, who was elected to the school board in April of 2021 and re-elected again in April of 2024 with the highest number of votes. This resounding victory is a testament to the satisfaction of voters with her performance during her previous term. Latonya's reputation has only strengthened from 2021 to 2024. She is recognized as trustworthy, approachable, transparent, and deeply committed to both students and the commi, community. Over the years, she has built strong relationships with families, staff, and community leaders, actively engaging in community events and fostering open communication. Her character inspires confidence, and she is seen as a dependable leader. Furthermore, Latonya has taken the initiative to request an audit of the St. Joseph's School District. This important measure ensures the accuracy, transparency, and efficiency of our school district's finances, demonstrating our commitment to due diligence and responsible stewardship of public resources. I wholeheartedly support Latonya Williams in her continued role as president of the St. Joseph's School District. Our district faces numerous challenges that require her expertise and proven track record. Thank you for considering my strong endorsement of Latonya Williams."
Thank you, Ms. Wong. Pam May.
Good evening. With attacks on public education coming from multiple fronts and more systems being set up to take tax dollars away from public education, now more than ever, we need a Board of Education to function well on behalf of the school district and the community. The board should model for students a love of learning and how to work together in spite of our politics and for the common good. At times, this board has shown us that people aren't always perfect. We all make mistakes, we all fall short. And when this happens, we must work harder to make things better. If we are religious, we put actions to words and we offer grace and forgiveness, and then we press on to what lies ahead. Failing to do this hurts students, teachers, and community. I believe Latonya Williams is the right leader of this board at the right time. When the board was working through questions of banning books, she took the wise approach of forming a committee from various perspectives to read the books in question. Her approach to working through this issue was not political, but was grounded in critical thinking, facts, and empathy before decisions were made and votes were taken. She is an advocate for transparency in an age when it is becoming harder and harder to seek truth and understanding. She models patience and perseverance. She is intelligent and kind. Her love of students, respect for teachers, and a desire for student success never wavers. My hope is that this board will move quickly and decisively to reaffirm her leadership as president of the school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. May. Brian Shul.
Good evening. My name is Brian Shul, and I'm here to voice my concern to the board as a whole. So I've ran twice for the Board of Education because I felt there needed to be someone on the board that cared about the students and the staff. While I was unsuccessful both times, I chopped it up because this community was not ready for change. I put my name in the hat for one of those committees a while back, and at that meet, and then I was at the meeting in which it was dissolved. Why? Because the board was not ready for change. They would rather fight amongst themselves and complain about personal issues than care about the ones that really matter, the students and the staff. Now there's a discussion about having a reorganization meeting for board leadership because the board is finally ready for change? No. Because of the faction that is happening before us. I have seen the divide on this board, and for the group that's supposed to be a nonpartisan organization, it's not really looking that way. I've seen comments on both sides of the aisle. No one in this room is a saint. Our superintendent is getting ready to start her first academic year at the helm, and when this is supposed to be an exciting time for her, to begin a new era, to start new, she is having to sit here and watch this embarrassing display unfold in front of everyone. As a member of this community, I support the leadership. The community chose to lead our students and staff. But I have to ask, when will it end? When will you put the students and the staff first? I have read comments on social media. Some of the nastiest things are being said. But I've also seen and heard from everyone on this board that they put staff and students first, and sadly, I don't see it. When do we decide to quit tearing people down and start building up a community that deserves to succeed? Now, I know every speech that is given tonight is probably not going to do a darn thing for whatever decision you guys are going to make. But if the leadership does change and the attitude and the overall direction of this board doesn't, everyone on this board better be prepared to answer for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shul. David Jones.
David Jones, I'm the St. Joseph and the Ag Vice President. I want to speak tonight on my behalf and the quiet professionals that come to work every day, our teachers and our staff. There is a high anxiety level right now. We're losing some of our best educators, our tenured teachers, some of our best coaches in the district across all our schools. And people are very nervous right now. The elephant in the room, are we closing the high school or not? Are people losing their job? And I very much appreciate Mark Crells and the budget director saying we're working not to anybody losing their job. But the staff, the teachers, the certified, the non-certified, they're very nervous right now. They're very anxious. And so the question that this board should be focusing on is, are we closing the high school? And if so, which high school are we closing? When are we closing that high school? Is it this, in, into this school year or in the preceding years? Are we losing staff or not? Those are the central questions that this board needs to answer for our staff, for our educators, for our community. And so I would encourage you to do that. And then the follow-on question is, what is the feeder plan? If we are going to close a high school, what is the feeder plan going to look from the elementary to the middle school to the high school? That is the business of the board. Uh, and that's what you guys should be concerned on. And I think that, I, I think many of my colleagues share those concerns and share those questions, and I encourage the school board and the district to answer those questions sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel Jones. Dr. Frick.
I'm Jane Frick. The St. Joseph's School District faces challenges far beyond what I encountered on the board, to which I was elected and served from 1984 to 1996. School enrollments are down by 3,000 students since I was a board member, even though St. Joseph's population has been stable at about 72,000. Nearly three-quarters of St. Joe's public school kids right now are living in poverty. And Hispanic, Black, and mixed-race students create a sizable minority among the whites, 65%. among the white 65% majority of students. Our public school perception is that our kids perform poorly on academic achievement. The school facilities are in dire need of upgrading and replacing. Qualified, many qualified teachers are retiring and are flocking to better-paying positions in suburban areas south of us. And voters, unfortunately, usually vote no for local property increases for public schools. Now, it doesn't take a genius to figure out that some middle- and upper-income parents with school-aged children have opted to send their kids to private schools like St. Joe Christian, where 89% of the kids are white. The teacher-student ratio is small, and the school is located in the affluent east end of town in a new building complex thanks to considerable private donations, many of which come from the Herzog Plan. And now, we learn our district is in terrible financial shape. Our new Business and Operations Assistant Superintendent, hired from outside the district, Dr. Roger Hedcorth, dropped a bombshell of a public memo last month to explain why the district's reserve ratio dropped to 10% rather than 20% as projected in last year's budget. He cites three reasons for the shortfall. One, an internal screw-up in the district's offices of somehow not filling out and filing paperwork so that over $9 million in federal title funds owed to the district for the last two years had yet to be received. Two, lower student enrollments than projected led to less money coming in from the state than predicted. And three, we managed to spend $2 million over the budget in capital outlays. Well, no wonder our elected president, Latonya Williams, raised the issue of having an audit. Okay, I will just say that Kim Miller, Rodney Chesney, Jennifer Kearns... Thank you very much. I have copies of what I was saying. God bless Latonya Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Frick, and I will remind everybody, no... I'll wait. I will remind everybody, no outbursts, or you will be removed from the room.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Lilia Whitman, and I'm an educator in the district. I, along with many others, am concerned with the priorities of some of our school board members with financial troubles recently coming to light and the need to tend to them with urgency. I wonder why our finances are not at the forefront of all board members' concerns. After all we've heard regarding the financial hardship ready to hit our district, I'm disheartened to see that tonight's priorities of some don't seem to align with concern regarding financial transparency and resolution. All of you campaigned or applied for your positions with financial transparency as a focus of your platform, yet tonight's most pressing issue for a special meeting is focused on removing our school board president? Situations like this very meeting give ammunition to the district's biggest opponents and further so distrust and hatred towards our Board and our schools. And who pays the price? The students and staff. When the community... When the community feels that the Board hasn't been transparent or acts frivolous, they retaliate through their votes against progress in our district. And who pays the price? Students and staff. With financial issues arising, shouldn't all of our board members be focused on this issue rather than changing leadership titles? I can guarantee these financial stresses will be at the front of all of the minds of all staff members. While all of us staff are headed back Wednesday to prepare to welcome students on the 19th, we're all going to be left with two big questions. Why isn't the transparency of financials the focus of our school board? And what does this mean for our staff and our students? After all, we're the ones who pay the price.
Karen. Plan out. I'm sorry, I butchered your name.
Thank you. Karen Quintana, Plan Out, 3518 Karnes, Missouri. Without objection, I have been granted three minutes to address the St. Joseph's School District Board members and you, the community, with regard to scheduling a special meeting to reorganize the St. Joseph's School Board. I understand Board Millers, Miller, Chesney, Kearns, and Richmond, these four Board members are requesting a special meeting be scheduled to reorganize the Board and basically oust President Williams from the presidency. As a matter of record pursuant to Missouri's statute 162.481.6 and 162.491.4, current Board members will continue to serve the remainder of their terms until those terms expire. St. Joseph's School Board President Latonya Williams is the only Black woman on this school district board. She represents all students, but most especially, President Williams is a representative of the Black population. And the last time I checked, St. Joseph's School District has a Black student population who is severely underrepresented in this district. I ask you, Mrs. Johnson, have the previously mentioned Board members already met in private to discuss this matter? And who initiated this matter? Ms. Miller, you would be a violation of Missouri's educational regulations and transparency if you approached other Board members in private to instigate this reorganization regarding the St. Joseph's School Board President without the public or without all other Board members' presence. I call for an investigation because this is an attack on Ms. Williams, President Williams' character. And this is now before the Board formally schedules a reorganization thus removing her and her leader, and her leadership position. I call for an independent investigation, and maybe we can ask the NAACP to handle that investigation. You can't stand to see a strong Black woman in a leadership position, or you're playing dirty politics by attempting to tarnish her name, thus advancing your GOP agenda for the candidate in the 2026 election, of which the district school board is a candidate, President Williams is a candidate for state rep in District 10 in the state of Missouri. Stop this behavior now. As the upcoming school year approaches, the St. Joseph's School District students deserve better. Put your energies towards free lunch. Good grief. I challenge you to do that. I tell my people, challenge them to get free lunch to all students. You can buy money for expensive conferences, but you can't find money to feed the students? A nourished student performs better academically. Everybody knows that. Do your duties as a sworn Board member. Don't move forward this agenda to schedule a St. Joseph's School District reorganization meeting. And stop this nonsense now. I yield my time at present.
Thank you, and our last speaker, Sidney Puckett.
Thank you. I'm very short. My name is Sidney Puckett. I'm the founder of Herzog Free SJSD and a proud product of the St. Joseph's School District. The purpose... Or sorry, the proposed reorganization of Board officers right now is not only an unnecessary distraction, but a misallocation of focus, time, and energy. Anybody else have deja vu from the book bans? Because I do. With pressing issues like financial stability and test scores, we should be worrying about those things. Will changing who the Board President is come with enough money to put the reserves above, over 20%? Will it magically make our test scores better or improve attendance? Is there a plan there, or is it just so we change whose name is on it? We have actual challenges to face, and you want the community to trust your decisions, but you can't even trust your own decisions. You guys decided who the president was. How long ago? And the community already doesn't trust you. What are you doing to create trust? Because it doesn't feel like it's happening. And doing these little like back deal, ooh, four members of the Board, blah, 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 when you notice where money and support is coming from of those four members. How dare you walk the halls of the places where these people pay the lights? They do the air conditioning. They take care of everything. And you sit there as volunteers and conspire to stir the pot. Grow up. If you want to die at St. Joe Christian, go ahead and reorganize. But if you want to actually serve all students like a public school district should, why don't you get back to work? Do something other than fight amongst yourselves. Because the community is tired. And they've been tired since I graduated in 2015. Yeah, I don't know. Are we gonna redo the book ban? Because if we do have a change in leadership, are we gonna reconsider those decisions? Are we gonna look at every decision the Board's ever made? Why would we give power to the same group that the book ban stuff came from? What are your priorities? You should be ashamed of yourself. I yield my time.
Thank you, Ms. Puckett. Agenda items. Special meeting of the Board. Kim Miller called it. Would you like to explain why?
Here, do you mind if I go ahead and talk?
She's going to have a statement.
All members of the Board will get a chance to talk.
I know, but I'm giving her my time to begin.
You called this meeting, and I think it's only respectful for you to explain why you called this meeting. She did not call this meeting. Okay, please, guys, calm down. This meeting's already kind of difficult. And members of the Board, everyone will get an opportunity to speak.
There was an opportunity to do this in a quiet way.
Can you turn on your microphone?
Sure. There was an opportunity to do this in a quiet manner.
I can't hear you.
Still?
I think that the new mics, it has to be closer to your mouth.
Is this close? I do appreciate those of you who speak on Ms. Williams' behalf. Her first term, I also voted for her to serve as as Board President. And things were, things went all right, but have deteriorated over the course of a couple of years. My biggest concern has been the lack of support for our superintendent. It began when we first chose Dr. McGinnis as our superintendent. And many things have just taken place behind closed doors, through emails, through other communications. That's a concern, and that does affect our children. So we do need to, I agree, this is silly to have to go through something like this just because of the desire to fully support our superintendent. If she can't focus on a job, if she spends all her day on emails responding to attacks, if she has to put fires out in different buildings because Board members enter offices and tell the administrators or teachers that their jobs are in question because of the superintendent. I think that does affect how our children learn and how our teachers are fearful of jobs and time on staff. That's the biggest concern. Because I know my desire is to serve this community. I am not a puppet of Herzog. I do have a mind of my own, and this has nothing to do with them. Please.
I'm asking everybody to be respectful and not interrupt her, please.
So that has been a cause of concern since we hired Ms. McGinnis. And it has increased over recent weeks to a point where it's almost intolerable for work to be accomplished by the administration. So it has nothing to do with who you are, where you come from, how you look. It has nothing to do with that, because I admire your tenacity and your being on this Board. That's why I voted for you on that first election. We all know your potential. We all know who you are and your desire to serve. But when it comes to supporting someone we have asked to lead our district, we lack on that. We choose to degrade her, demean her, and none of that accomplishes what is necessary for this district to be successful. And that's a hard thing for me to watch as a Board member. We do want to hear about our financial debt. And I am grateful. I praise God we have you on and to have found that problem right away. And again, that comes from a good interview process. To have surrounded yourself with people who also care about our students like you do. You are the most transparent superintendent and person I have ever met. And there is nothing that I fear finding out that is your responsibility. None of that is. But you are willing to take that in on our behalf. You don't throw stones. You don't call other people out on, wow, this should have been prior person. This should have been here. You suck that in, and you own it. And I can't tell you how I admire that. So that's where I come from. That was my desire is to... And if this is enough, I'm good, as long as we all understand that you matter, Dr. McGinnis. The way you do your work with integrity, the way that you love our staff and your administrators, the way that you purpose good for our district. It was a great gift to attend our new teachers banquet, to see the excitement, to see the enthusiasm that you have begun and that you have passed on to your administrators. It was amazing because they're excited. I'm excited. Our kids should be excited. And nobody wanted it to come to this. I promise you, nobody did. But if we're going to be successful, we have to start at the top because that filters down to our school admin. It filters down to their staff members, to everyone. I help in the cafeterias at the schools. It filters even down to them. So that has been my greatest concern, and we need to improve on that. We need to improve on how we support you without degrading or demeaning or... without degrading or demeaning or telling you you're not, your job's not done well or right. So I, I appreciate that. And I'm glad to have you as our super and the cabinet that has been selected to serve alongside you. So my hope is that we can get past all of this because we do have a lot of work to do, but I depend on you to lead that way.
Can we get back to the topic?
If you're not, if you're not able to be respectful, if you're not able to be respectful of all members of the board, you will, I'll need you to leave.
So that's my perspective and that was the reason. Because she's not being supported well enough and is inundated with questions with statements of degradation and questioning and kind of usurping her authority.
Thank you, Kim. Jennifer Kearns?
Can you hear me? Am I good? Not loud enough? How's that?
Ms. Cavender recording and I think that's a violation of policy. I think it's KKBD.
It isn't.
What are we?
It's not.
So, so.
It's only a violation if it's used inappropriately in a personal manner.
Which it is every time, but that's fine. That's your, that's your guys's.
Can we please get back?
That's fine. That's fine.
To the meeting at hand, as I mentioned earlier, it's already extremely uncomfortable. It's already uncomfortable. And if members of the audience choose in acting like this, it's their choice. It's not illegal, but that is their choice and that's how they want to be.
Great. I am one board member with one opinion and let's make a few things clear first. This is not about the audit. I believe most, if not all of us, support an audit. This is also not about politics either. Anybody that knows me knows I don't make anything about politics. Nor is it about any special interest group that would ever driven my choices. It has always been the students, staff, district and community that will drive my decisions. Reorganizing our board is not what I or anybody would like our focus to be at this time. We are at the beginning of a new school year, something to celebrate. And we have important issues that require our attention as a board and as a district. The first step to solving any problem is recognizing there is one. And I thank Dr. McGinnis and Robert Hedgecourt and all of the other ministers for doing just that. They have uncovered many issues and have been transparent about them this whole time. We must focus on supporting them while also asking hard questions and holding accountability. They have a lot of work ahead. The drama happening behind the scenes though, is unnecessary and unproductive in not solving any of these issues. I have already sent you an email outlining my concerns about how we are operating as a board and leadership. We are a board of seven, not one or two, and we are not unified right now. That needs to change. Unity does not mean unanimous votes or identical opinions. Healthy disagreements are necessary to make sound decisions from all perspectives. But division without direction is only harmful and hurting our work. I am proud to serve alongside every board member here, even when we disagree. I will absolutely support a special meeting if it is necessary to do and we need to move forward together. With that being said, however, if you are willing to listen and work with all board members and the superintendent and take our concerns as a way to move us forward instead of an assault or an attack, I'm on board. If the majority of the board wants to table this conversation, to see if that's possible, I'm fine with that as well. My hope is that this moment serves as an eye opener and an opportunity to work together, not against one another. I believe the majority of the board is demanding this now instead of just hoping. Strong leadership, respect and collaboration are essential for success of our students in our district. Our students are watching and they deserve to see us lead with respect, courage and unity.
Thank you, Ms. Kearns. Ms. Chesney?
First of all, I want to thank everyone who spoke tonight. I would agree with a lot of things that you said as far as working together as a board. It's no fun to have some of my friends who don't even live here tell me how they watch the board as entertainment. That is not fun. I don't enjoy that. But this, the meeting that we're having tonight, what we, what I want everyone to know is we don't take it lightly. It is time for us to figure out what we're going to do to work together. And there have been things that have been happening the last couple of weeks behind the scenes that we're not going to display to the public, but they are not good. And I want, I think we're very blessed to have Dr. McGinnis as our superintendent. And we need to support her as a whole board because she's got hard work to do. I have a passion for this district. I gave 29 years of my life to this district and I love it more than anyone can realize. I care about children. I always have or I wouldn't have spent that much of my life educating children. My, my life now is educating teachers. I take this job on the board very serious. And I would not be sitting here tonight participating in any of this if I didn't believe in what we have to offer as the St. Joseph School District. What I am asking is, is that we can have communication among all of us, which I think is what Dr. McGinnis has been trying to do and that's what's caused the upheaval. We all now know everything that is going on, whereas before we didn't always know everything that was going on. And I've asked for communication for a long time now and I think we're getting it and that's what's caused the upheaval. What I want to see us do is listen to each other tonight, think about what we're going to do and as a community, support all of our children. It is exciting to see how many people are here tonight. And you know how many people normally come to a board meeting? The administrative people. So if we really all as a community want to care about the children, we all should have big numbers to come every time to the board meetings so we can work together as a group of community people for the children in our community. We need to all work together. And it's going to start with us getting ourselves together and doing what's best for children. And I appreciate your leadership because I know that's your goal. Dr. McGinnis has been in our district for a long time. And that doesn't always happen. And the last thing we want to do is lose her to some other district. And so she's got great ideas. She's got, she's hired wonderful people. I've been in this district a long time. This is the best group of administrative people I've ever seen, the ones we just had and the ones we have now. And we are lucky because honestly, they can go work someplace else. So we need to all get ourselves together and make sure that we're moving forward for the children in our community. And I just am begging you to please let her do her job and not continually being critical of everything she does and trying to find her doing something wrong because we're all human. At some point in time, that is going to happen. She's going to make a mistake. But I, I would just really like it if you would just let her do her job so we can move forward. And that's really all that, that we're talking about tonight and what we want. So I'm just begging you as a community to also think about how, how are you supporting children in the community? Are you volunteering in schools? Are you running for the school board? There's lots of options of ways that we can all work together and help our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chesney. Mr. Moore?
So, you know, I have, I have grave concerns that Dr. McGinnis feels unsupported. And I want to say publicly that I support her and I don't know of anybody I want to see succeed more than her and her staff. Thank you. So yeah, again, again, um, I absolutely want Dr. McGinnis to succeed and I don't know that I understand it, but the divide between the president and, and the superintendent has got to be improved. It's just got to be improved. As I look at our board the last several months, you know, I've seen a renewed focus on governance. I've seen a renewed interest in involving the community with committees. President Williams has led us in, uh, uh, what's become a really excellent policy review on a regular cadence. And as I think about the things that are important, our students, our staff, their performance, and finally our finances, I see nothing to be gained by changing board leadership and I don't support it.
My turn. Thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate your interest in the, um, in the school district and the students and the teachers and that's the sole reason that I, I put my name in and, and I wasn't elected. I was appointed. I'm not, I'm not embarrassed about that. I'm not embarrassed about my time in St. Joe or the things that I've done. I've worked with many of the folks here at Latonya, for sure, in committees previously. Helped run a campaign in the nineties. I've, I've had a long history in, in St. Joe and, and continue to be committed to what I consider one of the most important things in our community. And that is an excellent, um, school system with community support. And that starts with how we do things with our children, our teachers and our administration. And I said these things when I spoke and was interviewed is I had three priorities. And, and I'm still committed to those. I'm committed to those completely. One is supporting the students, teachers, staff and administration. That's one. Two, I saw attention within the board and, um, and, and thinking I could help. And that's what, that's what I'm committed to doing. And I feel like that without exception, that's what I've attempted to do in my short time here and that's what I'm going to continue to do. I'm going to continue to try to help our board be more functional and more unified. And number three, it's crucial that we as a community, um, see our schools in a positive light. You know, I, I recently, um, saw that, um, DeCabe reran a bond issue and had ninety-two percent pass on their, on their bond issue, ninety-two percent. And, um, they're proud of their school. They're proud of their school system. They're proud of, um, their, their students and they, they, it's not just about the money. They, they, it's a pride in what they do and it pains me after fifty-five years in St. Joe and myself graduating here, um, kids graduating, my kids graduating here, grandchildren here. It, it pains me that the St. Joe School District is not the pride of the community. I want it to be, I'm, that's the only reason I'm here, is to do those three things. Work for the students, teachers and administrators. Work to bring the staff and the, the, um, the board together. And, and I'm sure Latonya would, would say, I, I gotta believe. We, we met this week and, um, no secret meeting. We met at Panera. We had a, we had a two hour time that we spent together, honestly communicated. We've done it before and we did it again. And, um, I, I'm committed to trying to work for unity of the board. And then I'm committed to the UO as a community to say, we've got to send the signal that says it's a new day. Dr. McGinnis has come in, um, we've turned a page. Everybody, we've turned a page. We have a rare opportunity here to say, let's start again. Let's do it again and let's do it right. And I want to encourage us as a community, um, to get behind that and do it. And so I appreciate you, appreciate you being here and I respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richmond. Ms. Lanning?
So I wasn't involved in any of the pre-conversations about why you were all were bringing us here. So I, I have been asked and I didn't know. I, I will say I get real tired of people saying that there's fighting amongst the board. There's fighting amongst the board. I didn't send out text messages about the board when I campaigned, like the two of you did. I didn't take thirty-eight thousand dollars in flyers from Herzog like you did. I, I.
Excuse me?
I sat here, um, you've all, there's been two people, you know, I sold my house. Two people have come to me as they were instructed to, to ask me about my residency. That was Mike and Latonya. I shared that with them. Rather than you doing what you were told from MSBA to address me directly separately outside of a meeting, Kim, you worked with Herzog and I knew it was coming because Rhonda had mentioned before that it was going to happen. That you were going to try to use part of the agenda to discuss my residency. So I, I come, I get tired of the, oh, they're fighting. I don't, I don't agree with a lot of the things that you all do. But as I said before, I come to meetings and I cast my vote. I don't, I don't do any of your text messaging. I don't, I don't do any of the, of the rest of that. I don't, I don't meet with Brad Lager and see what he wants done. I don't take his money. I don't do any of that. So as far as wanting unity amongst the board, Rhonda, for committee appointments, you appointed Jacob McMillan, who also got thirty-eight thousand dollars from Herzog, who also initiated the book bans. You appointed Asara Garcia, which I would think we would both agree would be a little divisive for the board. And then when Asara pulled out, you, you appointed Skylar Smith, who's running against Latonya for House District. So I don't want to hear a word about how we don't want to be divisive to one another. That was a divisive choice. As far as this support for the superintendent, so I'll be the first to admit, I am critical of the staff. I'm critical of the staff. In the last thirty days, we've had several sunshine violations. Several, several. It's, it's a very easy law to follow. Just don't reply all. When you send an email, put the board secretary on the email. Yet somehow we continue to break the law. Karen Plantop made a really good point. Even the four of you talking about having this special meeting and all being on the same page of why you're doing it is breaking the sunshine law. I'll remind you that we're currently under investigation from the Attorney General, Andrew Bailey, for breaking the sunshine law. So how we cannot, I, I just get so tired of the unity, unity, unity. Just come to board meetings and cast your votes. I don't, I don't care. I don't care who you associate with on the, I don't care. But if you want to say that this is only about support of the superintendent, that's not true. And I'll, and I'll get back to that. And I'll get back to that. Dr. McGinnis, you and I have had at least two conversations where I have explained that I asked a lot of questions. I didn't run for school board because I wanted to sit up in the front and I wanted positive things, which was good because that hasn't happened. I, I didn't run for that. I ran because I was pissed off at Dan Colgan and the people that didn't hold him accountable. So when I say, hey, I think we're sharing too much in, in emails about HR related issues. Hey, I think we keep breaking the sunshine law. Maybe here's some ways to do that. When I question, uh, you know, a report we're seeing is from June sixteenth, but we've never seen it before. Where did it come from? When you tell me that you have to apologize that you intentionally don't return my calls or emails because you don't think I like you, that's not professional. That, that is what happened. And, and again, I didn't call this meeting. I didn't call this meeting. But this is what you all wanted to talk about. And again, it's not just, I, I will not blindly support any of these, any of these staff. I like them. I think they're fine. I really liked Dr. Seegerist. But if he did anything wrong, he needs to be turned in for that. Like asking for blind support of the, of the, of the staff is, it gives, it gives Dan Colgan vibes is what it gives. And that's concerning and no one should want that. And I don't, I don't think you want that, but I will say I am, I am concerned with the direction we're going and the lack of transparency and the difficulties in the communication. Now, I don't, I, again, I don't believe this is just about support for the superintendent. I've seen the comments on Facebook calling for you all to remove her. You're in that group, Kim. You're, you're in that we three schools group where they talk about, they make racial rhetoric. Kim. You're in that We Three Schools group where they talk about, they make racial rhetoric. They talk about her hair. They talk about her nails. They talk about how she talks. They intentionally misspell her name. That's racism. That's racism. No, but Kim, and you just asked me, do you participate? No, but you're complicit and that's just as bad. So that, now also think about, if the people that are clapping hardest for you are the ones that are on film saying the N-word, that's a problem. That's a problem. And again, I didn't call this meeting. I didn't call this meeting. So I didn't call this. I know that you're all upset about the KCUR article. I get it. They've invested $49,000 into the three of you. I get it. They're upset. But what you're not understanding is that we're behaving as useful fools for them. They're sitting out in their tower on Riverside. They have four people on the School Modernization Task Force, four. Governor Kehoe took money from Herzog and he put four pro-school choice people on the task force. And Kehoe has already said, don't give public schools any more money. So what do you think's going to happen? Well, here's my prediction. My prediction, because we're ground zero, we're the example, that task force is going to come back with a formula that says if you're provisionally accredited or if you're unaccredited, you can have your kids go from the public school to the private school and their dollars will follow them. And why, and that's my point, is we should be focused on the APR and we should be focused on finance and no one, no one should be concerned about getting too many questions. No one should be concerned about, hey, we broke the law. We should stop doing that. That shouldn't, the fact that you're asking, I feel like you're asking me for blind support and again, I will not give that. I will be critical of the staff because that's what they get paid for. If they do a great job, they'll do a great job. I understand, like, we mess up sometimes. Things happen. I get it. Communicate with me and we'll move on, but not communicating is not an option. We have schools starting in a week and I get where you're, I don't know, I don't know exactly what you're saying. If you're saying, well, hopefully this is a wake-up call and it's embarrassing to Latonya Williams and then if she does better and she's nicer, I don't know. I don't know what the plan is here. I don't know what the plan is. All I know is, again, you're playing in to the, everybody's mad, they're divisive, they can't get it together. None of you have picked up the phone and called her. Yeah, you had a meeting. You had a meeting. That's fine. You had a meeting. You had questions about me. You didn't ask me. So if we have, if we have, I have always said, if you have a problem, you sent me an email. Never got a hold of me. Got to send me an email. Broke sunshine law. When you have a problem with someone, talk to them, not about them. Before, yeah, I know. Before, as I left and as I came back to my station, you saw me hold up something. I think I threw it on the ground. It was a pamphlet on how to be a good Christian. So, and I don't know who put it there. We'll rewind the film and we'll be able to see. But my point is, until we focus on the students and the staff and the finances and the APR, none of it's going to get better. The We Three Schools nonsense. Kim, I shouldn't have to ban, I shouldn't have to block your husband from my Facebook account because he won't leave me alone. Like until, no, until we are focusing, until you start focusing, until you start focusing on the actual issues and answering the questions, it's not going to get better. It's not going to get better. And our kids and our staff deserve better than this. That's all I have. Yeah, I do. I do. I didn't send a text about you, Jennifer. I didn't send a massive text message with your name in it like you sent mine.
Communicate amongst yourselves afterwards about your personal issues. It's not the time. I do appreciate all of your time and support. It's been overwhelming in the process. It began at the end of last week in the middle of a funeral of my mentor. And I was getting calls and messages about this. I believe a portion of the issue is miscommunication and misunderstanding. A couple members of my board are new and then others are just uninformed about the job of a board president. As the board president, I have always acted according to policy, according to law and statute and at the advice of legal. Every decision that I have made in all of these years are rooted in those things. And it is always with the best interests of the children and the staff and community in mind. And I will admit that this is extremely embarrassing. I do know that I have had lots, I've had lots of calls and emails and texts and everybody that came this evening in support. It means more to me than you guys will ever know. But it is embarrassing in that my board called a meeting to discuss recalling me instead of a special meeting about our APR scores or finances. It's extremely bothersome that if there is an issue on the board, all of a sudden, it's all my fault and we are a board of seven. I'm not able to make anybody talk to me or communicate with me. All I'm able to do is my best. I've been the president for a few years. A year ago, Mike served under me as the vice president. And it was a learning curve. It was a learning curve, you know, but you grew to know and understand my role as the president of the board. And I've heard individuals and they're like about the support of the superintendent. I completely support her. I work hard for this woman and the district every day because I know that if she succeeds, I succeed. Yes, I'm going to ask questions. I am going to do my job effectively. It is not emotional. It is not a personal thing. It is doing a job of a leader. And I understand if my role is not always known, you know, that you will not understand why I made decisions. Well, if there's a problem, ask and I'll answer. I'll let everybody know everything I legally can. Everybody knows that about me. All you have to do is ask. Now, it is my wish, I want all the members of the board to take into account of all of the emails that we've received, all the individuals that gave up their evening and they're asking us to put everything aside and to do what is best for the children and the staff in this community. I pray that you guys are able to do that and continue to allow me to be the president of this board because out of everyone on this board, I've got the longest tenure, education, and experience. A few months ago, I received the highest achievement a school board member in Missouri is able to receive. I know that there are individuals and you do not like me and that's completely fine. I work with lots of people every day and I really don't like them, but I'm able to work with them. And I know that your friends, I know they may not like me and that's fine too. But I know my job. I do my job accordingly and effectively. And with all of that being said, I do understand your concerns. It's not like I'm just not listening. But I need you to give me your concerns in order to take them into consideration. I need you to let me know what you're thinking prior to it coming to this. Kim, you did approach me last Wednesday, contacted me for a meeting. First time you've ever reached out in a long time to me. And I thought that we were on our way to building a relationship and it was either you resign or we're going to call the special meeting. It was not to ask questions like, why are you doing this? I tried to talk to you at that meeting. I wanted to talk to you. I want to build a relationship because it is what I do. I'm not able to do that unless you allow me. Now, all of this, it's not only making me look bad. It's making all of us look bad. And the staff is looking at us. Kids are watching and parents are watching. I've been contacted by three national media organizations about this meeting. And they're not asking about our school, about the kids, about the district. It's asking about this mess. And as I said, that is embarrassing and I want all of us to do better. And I fear that if this mess continues, things will only get worse. Is there a motion on the floor? Yes, but as you do that, I want you to know that it will allow other people the opportunity also to talk. And then I'm going to ask everybody again, you know, to please to be respectful of everyone that's speaking.
So just a couple of things. The thing is, we all have to work together. We do. So even the accusations that were just made that weren't true, I was sitting 12 days with my husband in the hospital. So if you think I had anything to do with this, family's more important, I promise. Okay? And I've never done anything on Facebook, text messaging, anything to you. Took you over it. Two, wait.
It's okay with me. It's okay. It's not your turn. It's hers.
Nothing happened to you from me. I have better things to do. Two, do I think you could do well? I do. But we are a board of seven. I have requested stuff to, I have requested meetings with you. I've requested that you were supposed to request with me. I was told you're supposed to call me. I'm like, great. And then I finally emailed you. I have emailed questions and never got a response. Again, you have to listen to the concerns. And I will greatly sit here and say, hey, let's table this because we do have more important things to do. So yeah, I can sit here and say, I motion to table this.
I have a motion on the floor and I have a second. Actually, I'm going to interrupt you. I'm sorry. I'm going to, yes. I need you to clean up your motion. What actually is your motion?
Well, and here's my concern is if you table it. We're going to put it on every agenda until you, until you take action on it.
Or I thought.
If you table it, it just comes back?
No.
When we decide to.
No, no, no. It stays.
And it stays as old business.
As an agenda.
Okay. Well, then I apologize. Then we can.
Okay. So what do you guys want to do?
So I think the proper way of Robert's rules is if you guys want to move forward with scheduling a special meeting, that you would make a motion to follow through with scheduling the reorganization. If you don't, you don't do anything.
Latonya, I apologize if you felt like that was an either/or because that's not what the intent was. The intent was to give you an opportunity without this and to hear us. So I apologize if you felt like you were given a demand. That was not the intent. It was to do it separate of having to do this in a public manner. So I apologize if it, if you felt like you were given an either/or or an ultimatum, that was not the intent. So I apologize. I do.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Is there a motion on the floor? If there is no motion, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Do you call the vote, please?
Ms. Miller?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Parnes?
Ms. Lanning?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yeah.
Board members, you may take the items that are in your folder or please leave your folder.
This meeting is adjourned.